Advisory. To order, calling it to order and acknowledging that we would like to begin by acknowledging and honoring with gratitude. The land on which we gather is the traditional territory of First Nation elders and peoples who have lived and continued to live here and have cared for these lands. Zoom etiquette. Now I have my participants on the side and I will ask that if you want to speak to please use your hand. And I will acknowledge you. I think I've got everybody on. So. So. Please identify yourself. If you are not speaking, please mute your microphone and raise your virtual hand to vote. Or just pardon me, raise your virtual hand to speak and please vote by waving your hand. The meeting will be recorded and if the meeting agrees, the recording will be posted to the public. So I would ask for a motion that the meeting be recorded and made available to the public. Could someone raise their hand?
Yep. Darren moved. Juliana seconded chair.
Okay, I'm not seeing the hands.
Yeah, I am. That's what I'm doing. I'm watching.
Okay, well then I will, I will. Get out of here. Um, and I would ask for the vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. The next item of business is to adopt the agenda. Are there any lead items to be added?
Yes, yes, Chair. I'm going to try and share my screen. Hopefully it doesn't mess everything up. I won't do it. I won't do it for long. But under a couple new items. Chair, oh darn. I'm sharing the minutes. Sorry, sorry Chair. Here's the draft agenda.
Does everyone have a copy of the draft agenda?
Oh, wait a minute. Are you seeing the agenda? Maybe you are.
I'm seeing the advisory group.
Draft agenda.
Agenda should be below that.
Yeah, there's, there's the group. Just a comment, we don't have a representative from Boundary Women's Center. But there are two new representatives on the table. Lindsay Erickson Erlinson is here for Beth McCormick. Beth McCormick has retired. Ashley Williams is here for coins, but she sends her regrets. And she intends to attend future meetings. And as many of you know, tennis is left on a medical leave. And I think that's everything, Chair. But the new items are, I have put on a new business. If the meeting will accept a bit, a bit of a discussion on the community responses to the COVID and the vaccine passport. And the other thing is, is my recommendation for next meeting, which we'll discuss at the end of the meeting, to see if we can move into a bit of a hybrid meeting. That is, we were hoping to meet personally this meeting, but that didn't happen. Anyhow, Chair, that's, that's the, my suggestions for amendments.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
William Kaylee moved. Darren Pratt seconded.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Now we're going to adopt the minutes of the June 16th regular meeting. Excuse me. Can I have a motion, please, to adopt the meeting minutes as circulated? Alan Cooper moves, seconded.
Darren Pratt.
Darren Pratt. Are there any errors or omissions? Any hands raised?
Don't say anything, Chair.
Hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to adopt the minutes as circulated.
Aaron Pratt, Juliana.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Now reports from members and guests. As you are aware, I'm sure that both John DeHaan and Ann Palmer have both resigned from our social services advisory group. And inasmuch as John was the co-chair, I would like to ask if anyone would be interested in acting as a co-chair. And I'm prepared to stay on as a co-chair. Any hands raised?
We need to twist some arms, Chair.
Madam Chair, may I, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is this maybe not a time to have a conversation of the focus and kind of the intent of the table moving forward? If, if members of community have backed out of the conversation?
I think that's an excellent idea. Yep, I think it's, it's a very, very good idea. And I would invite you to, to start the conversation.
I guess from my perspective, and just for transparency, I had a conversation with John before I went on holidays at the end of August. And he let me know that he was planning on stepping down. I was surprised when I got back from holidays to realize that C4 itself had also chosen to kind of not remain at the table in his absence. I guess the question becomes, when this was initially formed, it was with the intent to have all voices of community heard to multiple levels of government. So if we don't have members of community that may differ from our viewpoints as service providers at the table, have we lost something in that messaging in that, in that fulsome discussion?
I would be interested in hearing others who have been at the tables and now is Tammy Battersby here?
Chair, I think William Kaylee is waving his hand.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Thank you. I didn't see that.
Thank you. Darren, I certainly get your point, but people join the group voluntarily if they want to have their viewpoint put forward. They choose to leave or stay. Yes, it's a shame that we've lost a voice that doesn't always agree with the majority, but that's their decision. So I don't see that anything really has changed.
The other thing I'm aware of is that that they did ask, Ann Palmer did, if anybody from C4, and they changed their name again, but was willing to take their place. And no one volunteered. Which is unfortunate. Juliana, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I have to agree with Darren because I think it is pretty important to have everybody's voice at the table. You know, I'm here representing seniors. I think you do need somebody from the community coalition to come forward and be on this committee. I just say it's important. I think that counted out in voting and everything else. I think it's.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't got a solution for it, but I'm just saying that.
Oh, please, please put that forward then, Juliana. What was your solution?
Oh, no, I'm saying I don't have a solution at this time. I don't, but I have said before, and I know that it's not really part of the terms of reference, but you know, that should have more input from the community on this, on this committee or somebody sitting in from all different. Sorry. For people on the, from the community sitting on this committee. And I had suggested advertisement of some kind or that, just, you know, welcoming people, you know, we're, you know, ready to start a new year. Let's get some new people in here. I know that as I said, it's not part of the terms of reference to advertise ourselves, but maybe that's something we want to do to try and get your interest group. I don't know.
Anyone else wish to comment?
All right, Mr. Pratt has his hands up, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Darren.
Thank you, Counselor Moslin, Madam Chair. So then it comes back to the initial place of what is the role of this table moving forward? So is this something that serves the purposes of the city? Is this something that serves the purposes of the province? What, what, what does this table propel moving forward?
William, I see your hand up.
So Darren, in response to that, so when one party chooses to leave the group, that changes the purpose or puts into question the initial purpose of the group. I'm not understanding when one, one party decides to leave, how that changes the fundamental purpose of the group.
Well, I think this, I think you're, and this is out of context, Mr. Kaylee, this, this, there was the secondary point to my comment was in the past, we have made recommendations that have been perhaps not taken seriously. And so moving forward, who, if this isn't, if this is just a place for service providers to sit and talk about what we do, we have other tables that do this. We have multiple other meetings in our community that, that, that does that task. So is this something, what I would like to hear from the city and from other members of, the member saying, we get X out of this, or we feel we can influence Y. And the city saying perhaps, yes, we value this table because of this, this, and this. No offense to the table, I love seeing you all. I have other things I can be doing than this meeting when I see so many of you at the other tables in community having many of these same conversations. So the genesis of this table was to have a robust conversation to provide guidance to multiple levels of government around what we as providers in consultation with community felt served our communities best. So again, if just this component of, you know, are we doing the best that we can with this table or can it be something else? And who's listening to us these days?
Chair, if I could respond. Okay, first off, I want to thank the people who have attended these meetings. The discussions from this group have been consequential in the terms of locating a shelter, both an emergency shelter or COVID shelter. The recommendations of this group have also helped and the participation, you know, stabilize the situation where we now have a trusted local provider. This group also has an impact on me personally as a counselor, because I get to ask questions and listen to responses and see how groups collaborate. I communicate as these meetings are often watched by other counselors that, in that, and I think that has helped council make decisions, doesn't necessarily always follow the recommendations of the group, but the process that sees the ideas debated in public by the social services who are carrying out these decisions seems to be relevant, Chair. And I would encourage, if the group decides to find value in these meetings, I will continue to serve as recorded secretary. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Juliana, I see your hand.
Well, for me personally, I joined the group as part of the Grand Fork Senior Society to make sure that seniors were a part of the table for this. Now we have formed a seniors advisory committee, which has just started, only had one meeting, but I find that I deserve better focusing my attention onto that committee and dealing with seniors issues. And while I find it's important that you not forget about seniors in this committee, if this were to continue, I don't know if I personally would still continue to sit on here because I want to focus my attention on that one. And the senior society as a whole. But I think it is important seniors are not forgotten or left out of the table, especially if you form a committee such as this.
Thank you. Okay, I want to hear from the others in the group that we haven't heard from. And so I'm just going to call on, on names. And the one I'm seeing, and Heather, I see you have your hand up. So please.
Um, because I was the community integration specialist in Grand Forks and now Debbie is taking over that role. I'm just curious because I attend several of these types of meetings in all my communities. Is the city council present at those other meetings, Darren?
Some yes, some no.
Yeah, because I've always felt that this is more like for city council to hear our end and to maybe make decisions based on what's said. Most of the advisory committees or situation tables that I sit on generally just include social services, not counselors, because we deal with individual case management and things like that. So I don't know what the original idea was when you formed these meetings, but I do know that there is a place where city council needs to hear from us. Whether they hear the opposing view or not in this meeting.
Thank you. Um, Kathy Hutton, I'd be interested in hearing your perspective.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. When I came, when I joined this group, I was asked by Rowley Russell. And I was told by John DeHaan that at the time being homelessness was the main issue. I'm still very interested in the housing issue in, especially in anticipation of the, or I shouldn't say anticipation. At the time that I meeting, I was in anticipation of the regional district's housing report. And I'm, I've been given to understand that this committee deals with housing, specifically homelessness. I'm, I would like to know what other issues does this table deal with besides senior issues? I know that one. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Well, we deal with any number of issues that affect the community as a whole. And as you can see from the agenda, we're going to be dealing or asking for reports on COVID. The UBCM and issues that may have come out of there. We've got the update on the community action team interviews report. First, an update on the mental health outreach and other reports, immunoration of the homeless. And to ensure that we are getting adequate representation from the community. And, and I'm thinking that there are enough of us at this table that if there were opposing views, I don't think anyone would hesitate to raise them. So Kathy, I don't know if that adequately addresses your, your question, or if anybody else has anything that they would like to add.
Yes, it does adequately address my question of what other issues we're dealing with at this table besides the housing and homelessness issues. And I understand that the mental health issues are part of our discussion and COVID is part of everybody's discussion.
Yes, it is. Okay, anything else, Kathy?
No, no, I'm finished discussion.
Thank you. Megan, do you have anything you might want to add to the discussion?
I think at this time, I'm too new to this group to have a solid opinion.
Okay, I appreciate that. Anna? Do you have any thoughts?
I have not been attending. I'm here today because Jamie can't be here. So same idea. More interested in in having an understanding of how the connections are between the school district and the city. Yeah, nothing concrete to say right now, but perhaps something in the future. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Melissa?
Thank you. You know, I kind of echoed Darren's concerns in that it was pretty integral to have a voice of the community present. I know we all represent the community in our own ways, but I got to admit, the citizens group did offer a dynamic that was really valuable to the group to make sure we were considering all aspects and perhaps even points of view that we were unaware of. And the need was there, you know, I mean, the community was really crying out that they needed to have a voice, that they wanted to truly understand how we get to the decisions that are made. And, and so I would like to see us still maybe pursue that, whether it be advertising, that we're looking for people to come on. Doesn't necessarily have to be from that same group, but that if there is an interest, if there are concerns, that they know that the door is open. Because outside of that, I do feel the work of the group is valuable and we do help brainstorm a lot of things. And I'm glad to hear that council values, I know you and both the Chris's here really value the group and we can tell by all the time and commitment you guys put into it. But I worry that other counselors at city doesn't value the recommendations as highly. And so I do worry when, when we have recommendations that are either being, you know, not recommended or, or tweaked to just be for information. It is a little discouraging. So I hope that the work that we do here is valued. And, and I don't think we've solved all the problems yet, so I would like to see it continue. But I do want it to be a productive use of everyone's time as well. So hoping we can find a balance in a way of continuing and maybe morphing, but not losing that, that sight of what we were here for, which was definitely including the community's voice and all heads at the table. So I don't know if that provides much value, but that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you very much. And yes, it does add value. Debbie? I can't see you or hear you, but do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'm too new at this, this particular meeting myself to really put an opinion, but Debbie, I'm with the Ministry of Social Development. I'm the Community Integration Specialist here in Grand Forks. Now that Heather's taking care of her other places.
Okay.
But I would be interested in knowing from Darren, what other meetings are out there that are so similar to this that I could maybe be a part of as well to get the information that I'm getting here because I enjoy hearing what's going on around the town.
Thank you. And welcome to the organization. And hopefully we'll be able to meet in person one of these days.
For sure. Thank you.
Okay, now I have somebody identified only as A, and I'm not sure who you are or who you represent. Do you have anything you'd like to add? You're muted. I can't hear you if you're speaking.
I'm gallery.
Oh, you're gallery. Okay. Xena, do you have anything that you would like to to add?
Um, I just echo what Darren and Melissa said. I really do feel that C4 brought something to the table that's going to be missing.
Okay, thank you. So have I missed anybody?
Christine, I just hadn't, this is Alan Cooper, so maybe I should say my little piece, so. I'm, I'm used to being ignored, so that's okay. No, I mean, this is certainly, I haven't spoken up a lot in these meetings. I've attended a few, and I think partly for myself as my, as a representative, as the current chair of the Phoenix Foundation. It's a lot of self-interest in me because we at the Phoenix Foundation get a plethora of grant requests from different organizations and different people. And sometimes it amazes me to find out the amount of people that there are involved in social services and helping agencies and things around this, this town and this region. So I think that's certainly, certainly very helpful to me and to the Phoenix Foundation going forward. I understand Darren's point. Quite frankly, we're all busy people and I think we see a lot of us at the same sort of meetings. And we don't want to be in a world where we're just holding meetings and then going away and saying, well, we had a meeting. Thanks a lot. We'll go ahead to the next meeting. I have found it useful. I understand the perspectives of C4 pulling out of this because they really offered an alternative viewpoint. So I really love to see some, some representative from that particular group come back on. That's probably about all I have to say now, Christine.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to ignore you or bypass you. Okay. Does somebody want to just say something or?
Madam Chairman, it's William Kaylee. That went by too quickly. Could, could I just understand who A is?
A, I believe, is Ann Palmer.
Okay. And she's listening from the gallery?
I included because I'm just going by my desktop on, on top of my screen. So I, I invited everybody that was in the gallery and some chose to speak and some chose not to. So, and that's fine.
When we say the gallery, are you talking about the Grand Forks Art Gallery?
No, the gallery in the meeting that are just there to observe.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
It used to be clearer when we were in a boarding room, a boardroom.
Yes, it's easier. Okay, so I guess that concludes that discussion. I don't know.
Chair, Mr. Pratt, Pratt has his hand. Mr. Pratt Pratt has his hand up.
Oh, thank you, Dan.
Madam Chair, would you still like a co-chair?
Yes, I would.
Well, after hearing from the table that they see value moving forward, I will gladly co-chair if they'll have me.
Do I hear any objections? Hearing none, you're it, Darren. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So moving on, I'm going to ask Darren again for an update on the shelter at Hardyview Lodge.
If it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll lump my two reports together because they kind of fit hand in hand, so it's kind of hard to disentangle one without the other.
Okay, so then that's an update on the COVID within the vulnerable population as well.
Yeah. The shelter at these days, we're sitting between six and eight because the COVID response for vulnerable population was enacted early September with the outbreak in community. So under that COVID response, our our motel rooms were occupied and my outreach team is providing service to those people that were self-isolated. As part of the COVID response program with the shelter, people have to have a clean test prior to coming back in. So that has kind of hung up a few folks getting back into the shelter, but interior health has been phenomenal in providing a rapid response to doing the testing. But we're even prior to the COVID outbreak, we were seeing a diminution diminishing amount of numbers coming into the shelter. So we're still sitting at that six to eight number every evening. My outreach team is getting spread more and more thin as camps disperse further and further afield. We're seeing more camps moved out further into RDKB space and Crown Land. So my guys are are spending a lot of time tracking folks down and checking in with them. So at this point, my understanding is that the COVID in vulnerable population is stable. Interior Health hasn't really said that there's anything of ongoing concern at this time, so we managed to contain it fairly quickly.
That's your report?
That's both of them, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So I see through the agenda, I'm up next on the UBCM. The resolution that the city put forward with respect to additional funding for beds, rehabilitation beds and detoxification. That was passed at the UBCM and will now be the executive of UBCM will be monitoring or or meeting with ministry to to bring that forward of interest with housing prospects in the province. There's an eighty thousand backlog of affordable housing. That's just tremendous. And of course, there's a lot of NIMBYism going on. People don't want them in their backyard. BC has the second fastest homeless growth after Ontario. And I thought that was that was huge. There's nine thousand homeless average per night, which is three times the national average. The role of the federal government to address affordable housing. They're apparently, well, now the election is over, could be some money coming forward for that. BC leads in evictions. Rent evictions or however, people get rid of their tenants, which also adds to the homelessness. And I think that 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 is the the report I have that relates to this organization. So there there was there was a lot going on. It's recognized people working towards it. And I think that this group is an added benefit, not only to city council, but to the community as a whole in dealing with these issues. So I thank each and every one of you for your participation. And that's my report. Now, update on Grand Forks Community Action Team Interviews Report. And I don't know who is to give that.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I I did send out both parts, one and parts two of that report. I was hoping either Amanda or Amber were going to be here when I cut that into the agenda. Amber had spoken about this, and so had Amber at the previous meeting back in June. And both both reports have been shared to the committee. Basically, Amber has sent her regrets. She'll try to attend the next meeting. The two reports are, well, the kind of lengthy reading, they're basically transcripts about access by peers, people who have lived in, living experience of drugs with the healthcare system. The first one, part one by Amber is about the interviews with the peers. And part two by Amanda is the interviews with the outreach people. I think there are six of them featured in Amber's part two, and one of them is the police chief. And yeah, they do make interesting reading and heightened awareness about what the healthcare system looks like from that end, from the people who were living with addiction and drug problems as well as the outreach people, the outreach workers who are trying to serve them. So if you've got some time, both those reports are worth reading. Amanda also asked me to forward the invitation put on by the First Nations Health Authority. Tanya Robitaille is a member of that or on staff of that. Tanya used to be part of this committee. Anyhow, there is a meeting, a Zoom workshop on that, but on by the First Nations Health Authority. And it is a week today at two thirty. Anyhow, that that would be the report from Kat. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next report is on the First Nations representation. That was to be given by Jamie and she's not here. So Anna, I'm going to ask you, did she give you any information on that regard to present today?
No, she didn't give me anything.
Okay, so we can maybe put that on the next agenda, please. The report on the decolonization educational materials. I'm not sure who was to give that report.
I I'm hoping, my understanding, I think it was Heather who at the last meeting talked about coins having of being a source of that kind of information. And might be a better foot off until we have a coins representative representative back at the table, Chair.
Okay. Update on seniors outreach. Juliana?
Thank you very much. Some of you may or may not know, through this committee, we were able to start up a seniors advisory committee to deal with seniors issues and on on the seniors. And do have a council liaison on that committee as well. Now, the, we've only had one meeting and many of us right now, but we had a meeting and basically I'll just read you what mission statement of the seniors advisory committee is. To serve in advisory capacity to council and staff on matters that impact quality of life of seniors in Grand Forks. SAC offer acts as a liaison to enrich and enhance the lives of seniors by identifying barriers, forming partnerships with the community, acting as a public forum for issues affecting seniors. So basically, that's the mission statement and we only have the one meeting, so much came out of that. I I shouldn't say, but there there were a number of items that came out of it, nothing that was going to counsel at this time. Wanted to have another meeting. We've been met in person the first time back in July. I wanted to have another one two months later. I like to have them in person, not very good at hosting a Zoom meeting. So I postponed it till October and in October, we will try to facilitate another in-person meeting. And I would encourage anybody on this committee, if you think of anyone that would benefit from being on this committee or sitting on the committee and and offering information, just send me a text and let me know and I'll certainly enter the agenda and you can or cannot come when we have our next meeting and would welcome any voices. And then I'll just, I see the president of the seniors, the Grand Fork Senior Society is not on, so I'll just address that right now as well. The Grand Fork Senior Society, as you know, we're still trying to locate a senior center. And we still do not have anything firmly in place. We have worked closely with our liaison and council and staff at City Hall through through a number of different things. So we've looked at a number of different buildings and a number of different ways that we could achieve a senior center. So we're that dead in the water by any means and we're still actively working on one thing right now and hopefully that'll come to fruition and next month I'll be able to tell you that we have a senior center. So that's my hope anyway. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Juliana. Heather, can I ask for an update on the provincial outreach?
Okay, so it's actually Community Integration Specialist, so it's the program is definitely provincial. It's the Ministry of Social Development. I just first want to start off by saying way to go Darren for getting staffing for your hotel there because the whole hotel thing here in Trail and Castle Guard broke down as soon as they had cases. So our homeless here were in tents. That was their quarantine, or they could be transferred to Cranbrook, which we did with some, but they were back within twenty-four hours, so it didn't work out very well. Anyhow, so with the ministry, we've been really gotten very busy. We've been discussing how it's funny how even homeless people are on the same kind of schedule where September comes and everybody wants to take care of business. I think a lot of it is in anticipation of the the SERB ending. So we're having clients that are going to need to transition, but I'm seeing more and more seniors. The senior issue is huge because lots of them collected some of the recovery benefits and their GIS has been canceled because they earned income last year. I just want to let you know that through our CPP Program Services, I was able to find out that there's a little known document that you have to actually call Service Canada for. It's called a thirty fourteen. This document assesses a person's income now instead of going by last year's tax return. So when it comes to seniors who aren't collecting the GIS anymore, if it's because they fraudulently claim SERB and they're getting it getting it seized, they wouldn't qualify for income assistance because that's still considered income even if it's being garnished. For seniors who claimed, had claims and income last year that precluded their GIS from being issued this year, they can come on income assistance. But that would be pending the GIS review. We're not quite sure how this review thing works. I've got one form in the works now, so I'm going to follow up with that and I will certainly give Debbie that information when we when we have some success hopefully with this form. Apparently, you know, Service Canada doesn't have it online because they don't want to promote that people can get this service. So as far as in community, we've been having a lot of trouble with clients who can't access medical services, period. I mean, they're already stigmatized for being mental health or homeless or addicts. And now we're further stigmatizing them because they can't get basic healthcare. And I think this is something a lot of people don't think about. It's not that they're anti-vaxers. It's that maybe they can't get a birth certificate. They can't get their ID and MSP is now canceling their medical, even if it's covered by the ministry unless they have that proper ID on file. This is, I even had one client whose attendance at a vaccine clinic for his second vaccine resulted in a police incident. So, you know, I think we need to promote a little less judgment in our communities because my clients here in Trail, several of whom were beat up as soon as they found out they had COVID. And, you know, we weren't even providing them with a toilet. Our community services finally got together and and provided them with a an outhouse and tents and a safer spot to stay, but, you know, good for you guys in Grand Forks for having a hotel that actually stuck with it and for allowing them to stick with it by giving them the support that they needed to to take these people indoors. Anyways, that's my little soapbox for today. I know I was just joining when we hired Deb, so I'm thinking Deb will be perfectly capable of taking over as the ministry representative at these meetings. And I enjoyed meeting all of you and I'm just glad I don't have to make that big drive anymore.
Well, thank you very much for your participation, Heather. It's been really informative and we welcome Cindy. Thank you.
Sorry, that's Debbie.
Debbie, I'm sorry. Anyway, I'm welcome Debbie and we'll look forward to her reports in in the future. I don't think Lindsay is here. I didn't see her. So is anyone else? Can they give a an update on the mental health outreach?
Chair, I, first off, I apologize to Lindsay. The name is misspelled. I believe Bev did talk about this at the last meeting and it is in the minutes. Lindsay represents an increase, I believe, of point two five FTE for the purpose of mental health outreach. So I'm looking forward to hearing a report a bit more from Lindsay when she makes the next meeting. Kaylee has his hands up, Chair.
Yes, William.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to point out that this meeting has been really important for me. And and just to point out the usefulness of me being part of this. I'm with Habitat and I'm just currently figuring out the rental and mortgage payments for the eighteen families that we support across the region. I have to use last year's income to base the the monthly payments for these families. Lot of the families that I'm dealing with earned more money last year because of SERB. So they're they're not making as much money this year, but we're basing what they have to pay currently on an inflated income. So just to learn about that form thirty fourteen has been a huge gift to me. Thank you.
Well, that's good to hear. Excellent. Heather?
Something I'd just like to add to as far as seniors go, if they are on SAFER, they don't qualify for income assistance. I have done an intake with a gentleman who was on SAFER and OAS because he had two children in the home, two dependent children. It's still because of the way they calculate SAFER. It's the one in the same, so, you know, rather than put them through the whole process of applying for income assistance, if they're on SAFER, they don't, they don't qualify generally.
Thank you. Now, have I missed anybody? Now, have I missed anybody who would like to give a report? Okay. I see Darren.
I'm just wondering, Madam Chair, if it's possible for the city to give an update on its new bylaw enforcement officer program and how that might fit in with the human service delivery in our community?
So I I can give that a stab, Chair, if I if I might. Yeah, thanks for the question, Mr. Pratt. Yes, the city did get a strengthening communities grant for additional bylaw enforcement. And it is going to use that personnel and that grant for outreach to the the homeless encampments. That that's sort of the the point of it. I I can't provide a lot more information than that, Mr. Pratt. I I don't know if the position has been filled. I I kind of believe it has, but I haven't got any any feedback from it. So basically, it was, the attempt is to strengthen our own, the city's own bylaw enforcement team rather than use the money for private contractors. That was that sort of the intent of the hiring and to, of course, provide more outreach to the Riverside encampments. Did that help at all? And Counselor Thompson, if you've got something to add, Cory, do you?
No, actually, I don't because we, as you say, this is very new and we have not had any feedback. In fact, you're correct, I don't even know if that position has been filled at this point in time. But I I think it's going to be a good thing and a helpful thing. And hopefully help dealing with those who are homeless and dealing with those issues. Now, we do recognize that there are those who prefer and will not accept anything other than where they are currently living and and what they're doing. Having said that, fires are an issue and will have to be dealt with. And location is another thing. So council and and their bylaw enforcement management are working towards resolving the issue. And I think that's about all we can say at this point in time. You have something further to add, Chris?
No, I was just going to ask Mr. Pratt if, well, how did that, you know, that their outreach operations, not to mention mental health and other in Community Integration Specialists. I'm assuming that they're that this is going to have a positive impact on their, on on your services as well. Anyways, just a question to you, Mr. Pratt.
Was that a question around impact on services?
Yes, yeah, that was sort of the intent.
I I'd be very curious to know the format. If if this is coming from a stick rather than a carrot perspective, probably not. I I think where I struggle is, you know, the city went ahead with this. You have a community services advisory group. None of us were even asked our thoughts on this prior to the UBCM grant going in. There was no discussion around, you're now asking what the impact could be after this is already in motion. So this kind of dovetails back to my initial conversation at the very beginning of this portion of the program of what value is this table if those of us that are considered experts that are doing the frontline work aren't even consulted when it comes to things like things that may have an impact on the people we serve?
I'm hearing you, Darren. It's a two-way street. And and I I would suggest that council has not been participating in the way that they should in that respect. Heather, you had your hand up.
I would just like to know how you're framing this as outreach because I don't see bylaws outreach at all and they don't help my clients. They tend to hinder them.
One thing I think I'm going to suggest to our management and to our CAO is that there be a discussion between the organizations, your ministry, Darren Pratt, and and the the city with regard to how it's to be provided, who's who's responsible for what, if there are issues that rather coming down with the baseball bat, perhaps they can refer to one of your organizations. But I I really, I'm going to encourage that it all, everybody kind of work together on this. You've got different areas of expertise and that would be my my suggestion. And I think you're nodding your head, Heather. And I, after you said something, I'd be interested to know what Darren thinks.
Yeah, it it just, you know, it's as individual as each Community Integration Specialist in the province. It depends on what areas you're working in. Some are more specialized, whereas we're more kind of all over. I find it's hard to integrate myself in the homeless community if I'm showing up with bylaw. Bylaw tends to be frowned upon by most of them and and their trust is hard-earned.
I wasn't suggesting that you, anybody show up together.
No, but that's what I was just going to say. In other areas, one of our CISs will go with bylaw when they go out to shut down a camp, you know, to offer our services, usually in the bigger centers, right? Because you're looking at 20, 30 people being moved. Whereas in the smaller centers, everybody knows everybody. So I find it personally, an association that I don't want my clients to know is there. I mean, even when I do eye cats, I kind of wish I could sneak out of the back of the RCMP. You know, it's it's a trust issue, right? And if we're just constantly in there moving along, they're not going to trust us and request our help.
I hear you. Darren, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, no, I I think Heather touched on it. It's like I said, I'm just curious to see what it looks like moving forward. It was, it it was interesting to see the job posting in the paper when I returned from my holidays and and the phrasing of of the job posting of it being outreach. And again, the first thought I had was what does this do for impact for our colleagues at interior health and ourselves and public health nursing? Yeah, it was, it was just, it was an interesting, like I said, it it was, it was a moment of reflection for me that there's kind of been this. It hasn't been a lot of reciprocity. When when the city comes to us looking for feedback when it's convenient for them, but yet when there's decisions like this that have direct impact on those we serve, we're not even clued into it. And and that's all it was.
Yeah, no, and I and I appreciate that. So thank you. Um, now, anybody else? So moving on then to old business.
Chair, Mr. Cooper had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alan's going to get a complex. Alan, please.
Thank you, Christine, Madam Chair. No, I I just thought it might be interesting to provide a couple of brief updates on the Phoenix Foundation. We've had some challenging last few months when we haven't had a staff member. So it's fallen upon the board members to take up a lot of the administrative details. I have a meeting just after this where we have a recommendation to hire and we're moving towards a part-time executive director position. So that's going to be new for the Phoenix Foundation. Somebody who can take the leadership, really do outreach and really work to try to increase the endowment. So that's an important thing and we'll be making a public announcement about that very shortly. The other thing that I think we need to do with our Phoenix Foundation, and this is going to come in our strategic planning process, which will happen very soon, is to diversify the board. I attended a, and I think we've got a very strong board right now, but there is one interesting component about it. I did attend a virtual summit of the Canadian Community Foundations back in May. And one of the comments that was made there struck me that foundation boards tend to be made up of old rich, they tend to be extracurricular activities for old, rich, white men. And I thought, oh, my God, yeah, we don't, they, and does that represent the Phoenix Foundation? Well, maybe so. So one of the big things that we're going to be looking at in the next while is to diversify the Phoenix Board so it better represents the wide variety of people that we have, not only in Grand Forks but across the boundary region. Now, that's a, that's a goal. It's not going to come immediately, but that's certainly, I think, an important thing in terms of serving the entire boundary region from Christine Lake to Big White to make sure that we have not only geographic representation, but representation on the board of some of the groups that have been underrepresented in the past. And quite frankly, what has been overrepresented has been maybe, maybe more like that comment about old, rich, white men. So that's all I had to say. We have some important things going on in the next little while. And as I say, it is, it is an education for me to listen to the different viewpoints and groups around here to understand the amount and variety of people involved in human social services and helping other people. And that's certainly the role that we take in the Phoenix Foundation with our our goal of building a better boundary. And we hope that through the strategic planning process, having a new executive director and widening the scope of our board that we can hope to build a better boundary. So that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. As a former board member, although I'm not a rich old man, white man, I I'm pleased to hear that, that it's going to diversify. I think that's very, very much needed. So congratulations to your board on that. Anyone else?
I could do a quick one from the school district perspective. Obviously, our, we had hoped to be in stage four for the back-to-school portion of September, but we're not. So we still have our, it's now called the Communicable Disease Safety Plan that all of the district falls under. And that's what's used by schools to create their site-specific plans. So that just seems like a continuation of spring, to be really honest. It hasn't changed a lot, except that we have interior health that's able to put in regulations that actually do affect us regionally. And so the communicable plan is based on the provincial guidelines, but interior health has put in other measures that do affect us such as we can't have big assemblies, we can have two classes or up to 50 people that gather. We have limited our visitors to people who are integral to student well-being and learning. So that would include hot lunch people, one-to-one reading ideas, vaccine clinics, so interior health people coming into the gym, that would be included. And the other one is that we are able to do sports, which is really great for our kids. Our extracurricular groups are back. We just have a spectator limit. And so we can only have 50 spectators. Really, it depends on how big the gym is, but 50 indoors in a gym or 100 outdoor. So those are, those are the measures from interior health that we're also following that are on top of our provincial guidelines. We do have, we're working with interior health to provide vaccination clinics in schools. That's one of the challenges we have in ST51. Some of our smaller places in particular, like Rock Creek or Midway or Greenwood, sometimes it's hard for a family to get their child to a vaccine clinic. So it's not about coercion or about even convincing 12 and up that they need to have the vaccine. It's just for those staff, family and students who would like to to be vaccinated. So that's kind of our COVID update. I think one of the things that I had mentioned it to Darren before that has been a struggle for us as a school district this year, which is very new, is we've had teachers accept jobs, sign contracts and back out. And we suspect it's because they can't find a place to live. And so we actually have, we still have one, we still have three positions that are still open that we have teachers on call filling. And that is something that's very, very rare for us. And so we just suspect that the, we had the people sign contracts and then they just tried to find a place to live and they couldn't find a place to live. So that has been one of the issues that has really affected us as well as some of our employees not having housing stability and it really affecting mental health and well-being. So not only does it affect our students, obviously, if there's that instability in housing, but even our employees, QP, are exempt that are struggling as well. And I think those, that's probably the the two big updates that we would have.
Yes, and and the city is well aware of the housing shortage. It's not just the school district, it's industries as well and the city as well. That, you know, people want to accept positions and can't find a place to live, so they don't. So hopefully, we're working on that and hopefully that will resolve itself. Chris?
Just if I might add to your comments, Chair. I encourage Anna to get in touch with our CAO Duncan Redford. Because Duncan is talking about getting together with industry and trying to, because everybody's being impacted by the, you know, you can't attract, you can't retrain young staff because there's no housing. Well, that's no, so anyhow, please, I encourage you, Anna, to contact Duncan. He is trying to set up a meeting between the city and industry, but it seems to me that on the scale of things, a school district could probably serve a purpose there too.
Absolutely. Mind you, Duncan's away for for a bit. So either email him or or Anna can go through Daniel Drexler, our chief corporate officer. Okay, now. Does anybody else have their hand up? I don't see any hands. I'll just see if I can. Anybody's viewing?
We're good.
All right, so then we will now move along and I will ask under old business for an enumeration of the hidden homeless. Chris, that's you.
Okay, Chair, this this came up, you know, a council sometime ago. I was supposed to try to get it on the June meeting. And basically, it's just, is there any appetite in the in the committee to try to get a handle on the how many hidden homeless we have? You know, I I really, I don't know. Just from my cursory research, Chair, basically, a ratio of 3.3 to 1 is applied to guesstimating the number of hidden homeless in a community. At least that's what they used to do. Then in other words, if you had 20 hard-to-house individuals who were using shelter, then you probably had 60 individuals who were living on or trying to live with a housing instability, housing, potential housing homelessness. Anyways, I, so that, that is quite, I don't know. Anyways, it it, I'll just toss that out there if there's any other interest in trying to do that. You know, whether, at this point, you know, our homeless, our our housing problem is so critical. It's it's not just in the lower spectrum of housing. It seems to be throughout the spectrum. So whether you're talking subsidized housing, supportive housing or market housing, we are in a dire situation. But I wanted to know if there's any interest in further pursuit of trying to get a handle on those people who are potentially homeless.
Anyone else have comments?
I think one thing that's really added to this too is with this COVID thing, we have a lot more abuse cases, a lot more. And one of my fears is being realized is seeing these, you know, generally women having absolutely no way. To get out. You know, we have a transition house, but it's full. So does Nelson. It's full. I don't know about Grand Forks, but. It's, you know. It's, it's system-wide and like you say, it's income-wide too. It's not any one group of people. I myself. Was evicted from my place this year. So. You know, it's pretty scary when you're looking at the market and everything. It, I mean, we moved to Trail for cheaper housing and in the last two years, it's just skyrocketed to almost city levels, so. And, and I think a good majority, I don't know if Grand Forks is exactly the same, but a, a good majority of our hidden homeless are students. And young people. And people fleeing abuse that are just going to whoever's home they can crash at.
Yeah, I, I don't, don't have an answer on that. Don't have the numbers. I don't know if anyone else does. Um. Don't see anybody.
Mister. Mister Pratt, Chair?
Oh, Mr. Pratt?
Uh, not to answer that directly, Madam Chair, but I, I think that there's also this. This future trend monitoring, if we look at our seniors who are on fixed incomes, who own their homes and as cost of maintenance property tax. Continues to increase. And, you know, those of us that are in the sandwich generation that are kind of trying to manage our, our parents as they age in community. Um, it, it becomes difficult to see if, if they're not able to live semi-independently and there's no available extended care. Wh- where do they go, especially if their desire is to stay in their own home, as like I said, cost of maintenance, taxes, everything increases. So I, I think we also have to take into account, we have a lot of seniors, especially those without family in the region. Who will become more and more at risk of homelessness moving forward.
Yeah. You're right. Anyone else? Do you see anybody?
No, thanks, Chair. I, I guess it's scary to count. Uh, uh, at this point, uh. Uh, you know. Let's, yeah, I, maybe we should just try to do. Cope with this uh question with the, with housing. Across the spectrum and see what happens. And yeah, thanks, Chair.
Okay. Then going on to new business. Uh. Replacing representatives from the Boundary Women's Coalition and the Grand Forks.
Community Coalition.
Yeah. So, um Boundary Women's Coalition now. Can anybody speak to why we don't have a representative from them? We did at one time.
Yeah, it was Ellie Dick Dickinson, Chair.
Yes.
Mister Pratt has his hand.
Oh, Darren?
So, Madam Chair, the B W C is currently being run by an interim executive director located in Vancouver. So I know that they are in the midst of, of trying once again to fill that position. And if it is filled locally, I think that there will be. Some stability in the agency and an o- and an opportunity for them to come back to the table. But I know right now that they're in the same boat as, as many of us that with staff shortages and just. Leadership being spread thin, that I, I think that this has kind of fallen to the wayside. Like I said, their, their current acting E D is located in Vancouver, so. Uh I think that this is, this is an adjunct for that agency at this point.
So if and when you hear of somebody being hired, then perhaps they can be approached?
Um, uh you know, they're standing members. I, I think they don't even need to be approached. I think it would just be a gentle reminder to that person that they have a place. Table and have been since founding and, and that would be it. But also depending on who the hire is, that perhaps they would need a bit of time to settle into the new role. And this, once again, may not be the priority for them.
Okay, no, and I hear you. Um, now, what about the Grand Forks Community Coalition? Um. It's unfortunate we don't have any representation from them at this time. I'm not even sure who sits on that uh, on that group.
It was John and Ann.
Yes, oh, I know that. I do know that. But I don't know who else is part of that. Um.
There was an earlier suggestion, Chair, that we advertise. Uh, uh, and, okay, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm not too sure how. Maybe I could. I, I'm quite willing to do that. Uh, it, once we just sort of the, the table uh describes what it would see as appropriate advertising. Uh, and uh, uh, then I, I, I would, I would carry that forward. Uh, Chair, maybe where I, that the table could just uh enlighten me as to what kind of advertising they would like to see.
Well, I would um. I guess the question I have is. Does it have to be somebody from the Grand Forks Community Coalition, or can it be? Someone just from the community at large? What is the, what is the desire of, of the group? And I think I'm going to go around the table and just ask. So, so Darren, what, what's your thoughts on that?
I, I think for the interest of transparency, it should just be somebody in community who is willing to. A- and again, this is get, this gets tricky, and I know this was the complaint of several at this table, is who gave C for the authority, moral or otherwise. To speak on behalf of community. Um. I, I just think we need to be open to having some folks from community be willing to step up and, and. Strike balance in the conversation.
Okay. Uh Alan, what, what's your thoughts?
Uh, I absolutely agree with just what Darren said. It's difficult to put out a uh, a request that's uh. That's restricted to any particular group or whatsoever. And I think the, also the question before wa- i- is really good. You have to be careful who speaks on whose behalf. So I think an open invitation for the community would be best.
I'm okay with doing the last of these. Definitely. I gotta sit here in the meeting anyway.
I, I'm sorry, Melissa, I didn't, didn't follow what your, your comment was.
I'm so sorry, you guys. I'm trying to clean up the kitchen and listen in on you. I apologize. I unmuted there. Oh, my bad.
Now, do you have thoughts on, on the replacement of the. Uh Grand Forks Community Coalition uh from someone of that organization or community as a whole?
Well, I mean, I, it would be good to reach out to that group and see who steps up, because I mean. Jan and Ann did a ton of work and I understand the maybe reluctance of others in the group to kind of fill those shoes, because. You know, they're quite capable individuals. So I mean, perhaps people are intimidated. They have to be of that same caliber or, you know, put in as much time and. Really, we, you know, that was just a bonus that we got all that. So. I, I mean, I, I still think it is very valuable to have. Somebody at the table. I, I agree. I mean, I think we can all shoot holes in the boat and see if it floats and, you know, bring those other perspectives in, but. I don't know, it's just not quite the same as making sure that people feel like they have representation. And I agree, I don't know if. They were the best candidates to represent the community or if they did represent the community as a whole, but. Yeah, I, I guess I don't really have a solution other than I really think we should put it out there. That we do want folks who are eager and interested in having a voice at the table, that we would be open to that. Now, I don't know if they need to represent a particular group or anything, but really, anyone with the drive would be valuable. So, um, yeah.
My understanding is that Ann did put it out there to the um, to the coalition. And I don't think anybody stepped up. That's my understanding, so.
Right.
Um.
That's unfortunate. And perhaps maybe that is reflective of that they feel that their needs are met or that they are represented. Or that it is more balanced now. Perhaps the situation has changed.
Yeah. But, uh, okay, but okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Pardon my interruption. I'll.
Uh Heather, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that at all.
Um, I think it's always good to have an open invitation to interested community members for these type of things. It's been my experience that you might get one or two. You might not. Um, I also think it's good to maybe bring in somebody with lived experience if they're interested. And it might be part of your phrasing when you advertise.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, your thoughts, please?
Yes, my thoughts. Um, I'm not aware of anyone in the coalition besides Ann and John. I don't know if there is a coalition. Can somebody please inform me? Hello?
I'm not sure who's on the coalition either.
I wonder if Ann might be able to clarify that for us.
Ann, I would invite you to speak if you wish.
Um, I can tell you exactly how many members we have. There's, let me just uh pull it up.
Um.
Sorry, I'm still just getting this here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we've got just under six hundred members.
Thank you. And it's unfortunate, and no one from that six hundred.
I'm. Yeah, I just. I don't even know what to say, to be honest. Um, you know, for two years. Certain people have been trying to get us off this group and now all of a sudden, it's like, oh my God, how could they leave? They're so wonderful. Um, that's kind of not how it's come across. And um for myself, it's been unbelievably stressful. I have had migraines most times after these meetings and prior to. I have not liked the um. Snippy little comments that have often come across. And um, there's been lots of instances where I personally felt like I was being bullied. And I don't think anybody needs to do that, least of all a volunteer. Unlike the majority of you there who are getting paid, I'm not. And um, I don't think anybody deserves that. So it became just really, really difficult. And quite honestly, um, I would have left a long time ago. Except that I felt like I was backing Jan and helping him as much as I could in the background. Um, and um, I, I think the coalition is very aware of that kind of stuff that was going on. And that's why we're not getting anybody that's interested in stepping up to the plate. I felt that um, I would be in a better position to sit in the gallery. And monitor what everybody was doing without having to feel an obligation. And um, I can inform the community as a result of what's going on. But um, I'm, I'm just telling you how I felt and I haven't felt great for two years, so. It just seemed like not a good thing to be doing when you're already a retired person and don't need this in your life.
No, and that's unfortunate. And I'm sorry, uh, on behalf of the association that you were being made to feel that way. Um, I can certainly appreciate. Uh, how you would be feeling.
Yeah. It's water under the bridge now. Life is moving on as much as it can within COVID times. And um, I, like I said, I'm happy to sit on the gallery. I'm, I'm not sure. That I would want to come back into it at this point in time, because I, like I said, I just, I don't see it changing. I mean, if it, if I could see that it was going to change and this wasn't going to continue. But it seems like it's an adversarial scenario where um, it's us against them. And it should never have gotten to that point, because it's not us against them. We should be all in this together. And I am as appalled as anybody at what's happening in the social um venue. I, I think we're doing everything wrong, to be absolutely honest. We're not actually helping people at all, it seems. And we should be doing a better job of helping people. Um, and I. I, I don't know how we can change that. I think it's up to the government. The government has got to do a better job than what they're doing. And um. And we need the community to be involved. We need the community to want to step up there instead of fighting. With all of you guys, to actually look for solutions and move towards them. And, you know, um, my Pollyanna outlook on life. Was very much that I was getting involved in this to do that, to be a voice that would help. Calm the waters on the community of the side that's the most pissed off and angry and try and help to get some interaction. And I know that there are other communities in B C that actively look for members of the community to come on to their table. And they don't have just one or two. They have as many as they can get. And yet, you know, like I said, for two years, you guys have been trying, some of you have been trying to get rid of us or, or mute us or muzzle us. Or tell us that we can't say what goes on in a meeting that's about to be, you know, put out for everybody to look at anyhow. I mean, that's. That kind of is a bit distressing, don't you think?
I, I have to agree. I have to agree. And I, um, as I said, that's really unfortunate. Um. Because I thought both you and John were uh extremely valuable to the table. And uh. Um. Certainly would, would like to see you come back. And if there was somebody else within the coalition that could. Also be um. Be uh, sit at the table as well with you. Um. That would be good.
Oh, I tell you what I'll do, is I will think about it. Um, and I'll talk to some of the other members and see if they, there might be one or two that I could talk to that might, might. But we really honestly would have to see more of a sense of inclusion and, and, and actually listening to the concerns of the community. But, you know, it, it's one of the little things, and I'm, and I'm going to just mention it, is that it's really, really frustrating when. We ask a question and immediately we're told, oh, it's confidential. And yet. There was several times when I brought up a concern of the community and everybody wanted to know names, addresses. Um, is it in writing? Um, like, I'm sorry, confidentiality goes in both directions. So you have to be willing to accept that if the community has spoken to me as their representative, then I'm bringing forward straight goods. I'm not making it up. I'm the messenger. And um, getting shot for being the messenger is no fun.
No, and I'm probably guilty of, of saying certain, uh, answering certain questions that things are confidential. Um, only because until they're released by council, if they are done in camera, which is generally land legal. And um. Um, labor. Uh, that until it's released by council, I can't say anything. And I, there could be others that are in the same position as I am. Uh, with respect to confidentiality. But I hear what you're saying. And you know, when, from my perspective. If someone has a criticism. As long as it's constructive criticism. And if you are criticizing that solution. Then offer one in return. And, and that, that's kind of what I try to live by. Um. And uh, you know, that, that you were felt. Um. As though you were not welcome is, is really, I, I think unfortunate.
Well. I, 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 you know. That's how I felt.
Yeah.
So, you know.
I, and I appreciate that. And if you would reconsider and talk to some other members. Um, we would certainly welcome you back.
Okay, thank you. I will get back to you before the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Megan, do you have anything that you would like to comment on?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Okay. Anna?
Chair, uh, can I direct you to Juliana? Uh, uh. She, she did have her hand up and uh. On the question of how to advertise. Sorry, Anna, I didn't see.
No, I, 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 and that's fine. Uh, I don't see the hand. The only person I've seen the hand on was, was um Megan. Um.
I apologize, my power went out. And I, I was disconnected momentarily, so I missed the end of Ann's uh speech, but. Thanks very much, Ann, for everything that you've done on this committee. Back to advertising. Um. I had thought, well, the city puts out nice little um. I had thought, well, the city puts out nice little urban social media on, on council meetings and such. Why couldn't they advertise on, on that platform? Because it kind of comes from the city and it, you know, says, hey, we're looking for, you know, the description of the advisory group says it's made up of representatives from service agencies with a stakehold role in community health and welfare. But he said, also mentions there's a component of, of citizen, a citizen component that, that too. So people don't have to be a member of an affiliation of some kind. You can just have regular citizens sit on that have something to say.
Well, what?
Put it out. That would be great.
Anne, Anne has, has offered to rethink her position and to approach some members of the Coalition to see if they would come back to the table, sit at the table with her. But I appreciate what you're saying. And thank you, Juliana. Alan. Cooper, do you have anything to contribute or to say?
I have nothing more to contribute at this time. Thank you.
Who've I missed?
Anna.
Anna, yes, Anna.
I can't remember what we're talking about anymore. I'll be honest. So I feel like I've lost the thread. I'm, I, I like the idea of having multiple people at the table. I think that's very important. And I think that, that as a representative of the school district, like, I'm always very aware that I'm superintendent for all students and all families, and that's something that we always try to represent and always want to hear from all sides, so.
Okay. Well, I think, I think I've invited everybody to comment on that. So perhaps we can wait until we've heard back from Anne with regard to the Grand Forks Community Coalition as to representation at the table from their group. And if that's not successful, then the city can, will take Council laws, and I'll take it back to, to council and see what we can't put an ad out or make it public or put it on Facebook or whatever is going to attract people that would like to, to work with us. So does that about sum it up?
Yes, I, I, I guess it does for me, Chair, except that, uh, I'm not too sure when the next meeting is. If there was a motion, you know, move that the Social Services Advisory Group advertise for two vacant positions within the community if necessary. Maybe that, you know, that way we, I, we, if community, the Grand Forks Citizens Community Coalition does not want to participate, I can go ahead, go ahead and advertise somehow.
So. Someone prepared to make that resolution?
So move your, your worship, sorry, your, your chair. If necessary, the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group should advertise for two vacant, for two community representative, representatives at the table.
Well, I would suggest maybe that we include, should the Grand Forks Community Coalition confirm their draw from the, from the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group that? Do I put words in your mouth, if that's okay? Is there a second for that? Do you want everybody raise your hands at once? Kathy Hutton raised her hand. She seconded it. Discussion. Okay, and because I can't see hands, I'm again gonna go. Alan, do you have any comments on that?
No, I think that's good. I, I think it's interesting, Christine, that you want to make sure that I don't get left out.
Yes, I'm going.
So that's great. I appreciate that, but I have nothing else to add at this time.
Well, I, we just, I want you to know that you are important. Megan, you probably, did you want to comment or not?
Uh, no.
Okay. Anna? No. Juliana? No. Kathy hadn't seconded it. Any comments, Kathy? Darren? No. Heather? Melissa?
Nope, nothing here.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for the, oh, Heather, did you have something you wanted to say? No, okay. So I'm gonna ask for the vote. All in favor? All opposed?
Thanks, Chair.
Motion is carried. Now, the, the next item is is recruiting or inviting new members. And there was a recommendation that the food bank be invited, which personally I think is an excellent, excellent idea. So is there a resolution anybody would like to put forward that the food bank be invited to join the Grand Forks Social Services Advisory Group?
I think Juliana made that motion.
Did she? Okay, thank you. And I need a second, please?
Uh, Alan?
Okay. So is there any discussion on this? On this resolution? I'm not gonna go around the table. I'm just gonna say, okay, I don't see anybody. I'm sorry. Who, who did I miss?
Nobody.
Oh. Okay, so I'll ask all those in favor of inviting the food bank to join our table. All those in favor, opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Now, I the, the last under new business is the community responses to COVID and the vaccine passport. So I will just open that up for discussion. Anybody want to say something?
Chair, we have just, I, I thought at the last minute, maybe this might, I, the social services are struggling to provide services in the time of COVID. And they are facing a bit of a backlash, whether it's the schools or the hospital or whoever gets in the way. And is there any? So, you know, I'm quite concerned about that. And basically, the, the anger in the community, is there anything that are, we should be aware of that we can help mitigate some of this anger or, or what have you? You know, I, I am, I am kind of concerned that it's, that, that this sort of thing is gonna go too far and interrupt either services or actually, you know, bring harm to something. Anyways, that, that was my, so I just wanted to see if the table had any concerns about the community reaction to the vaccine protocol.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak to this? I don't see anybody stepping forward.
Actually, Christine, I just have, have a question. I, I'd just be interested if Anna could respond if there had been any incidents at any of the S D fifty-one schools that would lead her to be concerned or require the school district to put in any additional protocols.
We have had protests at our schools when there's been a vaccine clinic, but no concerns. So, you know, there, there's no blocking access to the school. It simply is a demonstration according to their Charter of Human Rights, which do have the opportunity to demonstrate. We have had it outside, some demonstrations outside the school board office. I think we had one last night during our board meeting. At this point, it has not been one of concern. Would not like in seminar where they actually had people going into schools, so. Yeah.
Well, the one thing I heard this morning, or was it yesterday morning? That the, the, Dr. Henry has changed her position on notification when there is a COVID case in a school that the parents are going to be notified. And I think that, as a grandmother, very important. Although my, my family and my grandchildren are all vaccinated, but I still think that that's, you need to know.
Yeah, I think what, that really what we experienced before is a lot of variety. This is new. This is all new. The pandemic is something we have not experienced before, and public health is really doing the best that they can in a situation that is new. I appreciate that Dr. Henry are reevaluated, but that's what they've been doing the entire time. They're looking at the science. They're looking at that response. They're, they're doing the best thing in a situation, and it can change in a week or it can change in a month. That level of anxiety is high for families. And yeah, it's, it's, you know, like I had said, we really hoped we would be in stage four and that we would not be having the variances that are coming out right now. And, and yeah, we really do want to build that trust with our, our families and the students and the community. And that transparency is very important. If we ever have another pandemic, I'm sure public health will approach it differently. We're, we're definitely learning as we go along, right? So, yeah, it's interesting.
Well, the other thing, just very, very quickly. The, the election. My husband and I voted in the advanced poll, and we had to wear masks, and we had to produce our identification and our vaccination passport. But it's my understanding that locally on Saturday, there was an individual unmasked, created such a public disturbance that this individual was allowed to enter the polling station. Vote. Well, all of the other voters had to wait outside, only that one individual was allowed in. And the voters had to wait until the, the vote was completed and the facility sanitized. So my son and his wife also voted in an, at an advanced poll and had a similar situation in Vernon. And the police were called and removed the, the individual that, that chose not to follow the rules. So that really, that really concerns me, and I don't know if anybody else has heard about that or what, if anything, we can do about that. But to me, it's just not right. So that's my soap opera, soapbox today.
To be really clear, like with school district, we do not have a vaccine passport mandate. So we are public education, and the last thing we want to do is put up barriers for kids or for anyone to come to school to learn. So we have other safety measures that we follow that help lessen the risk of transmission, but we do not require a vaccine passport to, to attend school for those age twelve and up.
No, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But this was, and I thought it was Elections Canada that brought in that rule. So anyway, it's over and done with now, so. But just for future reference, I guess. Anybody else have any comments before we call the meeting to close? I don't see anybody with their hands up. So then, moving on. There's no late items. There are no next steps. The next meeting is proposed to be October twentieth, twenty twenty-one at one fifteen P M. In hopefully the R D K B meeting room, depending on COVID or via Zoom.
Chair, actually, the intent here is to have a hybrid meeting.
Okay.
In order to involve Sergeant Kepler, who still, you know, who Zoom is outside his firewall.
Yeah.
So that he or maybe one or two others could participate, you know, in person, and that the rest of the meeting, as many of you know, that room is, I don't know, is there six screens? I mean, there's enough, it will take a little bit of a technical tour de force to make it work. Yeah, that's the, that would be the intent of that decision.
Okay.
Is there any other comments on that?
No, but I think it's a good idea. Oh, Kathy, I'm sorry. I see your hand raised.
Self, there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. With the meeting room at the R D K B in Grand Forks, a lot of people have been trying to have in-person meetings, of course, but I haven't heard of any. I chair the A P C right now, the R D K B Area D A P C or Advisory Planning Commission. And as far as I know, there's no in-person meetings yet at the R D K B. I'm waiting to.
Thanks for that, Kathy. If you don't mind, I'm gonna inquire, you're probably right, though. If that is the case, I may see if I can't pry open council chambers and see if I can, we could provide a hybrid meeting room there.
Okay, that would be great, Chris, if you could do that. We all want to meet in person again.
Well, it would be limited, right? You, you, it would be whatever number of people are appropriate in that room. It'd be ten or four. And the bulk of the meeting, it would be assumed, would be via Zoom.
Perfect.
Well, I'm gonna suggest, and with respect to Chris Moslin, I don't know that council chambers would be made available. It's not open to the public now. It wasn't on Monday. So I guess it's gonna depend on circumstances. So I would, I would be, I would suggest that in all likelihood, it could be. It may have to be a Zoom meeting again. So.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can't get Sergeant Kepler on.
Yeah.
Hello, in a room.
Invite him to your house.
Okay. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, so, yeah, I have to say we've done very well today. It's ten to three. And we have to finish by three. And so may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please? Alan Cooper? Seconder? Kathy Hutton? Uh, all those in favor? Proposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. See you next time.
Thank you. Been fun.